I called the Tuesday, March 13th, 2018, meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. And we're -- it's our pleasure to have tonight Dr. Robert Earls, the pastor of St. John's Baptist Church, to give our invocation. I'll ask my colleagues on council to stand for the invocation, and then ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Clark.
May we bow. Eternal God, our heavenly Father, we love you. We truly thank you for your love for all of mankind, and sending your Son to suffer, bleed, and die on the old rugged cross of Calvary for the forgiveness of sin. And then we thank you for loving us enough to send the Holy Spirit to be our God and our teacher and our comfort in times of need. We come on behalf of Lord for our fair city, the city that we love dearly. And we ask you, dear God, to bless this meeting tonight. We ask you to bless our leaders, our mayor, John Rowe, and our vice mayor, Liz Simmons, and city council persons, Dr. Whitaker, and Mr. Moody, and Mrs. Smith, and Mr. Clark, and Father, Ms. Lucas Burke. And Father, right now, we ask to God that you would intervene, and Father, and touch family members in whatever circumstances she's dealing with. I pray to heavenly Father and Lord that you would take full control and set her soul at ease, dear God, that everything is all right. And Father, we pray for our city manager, Dr. Patton, our city attorney, Mr. Ashby, city clerk, Ms. White. And Father, I pray to God for our entire city. In this meeting tonight, dear heavenly Father, I pray that all things will be done decently and in order, that you would give them, dear God, the wisdom like Solomon. Father, give them the courage like Apostle Paul. Father, give them, Lord, the love of a David that you had, dear God. And Father, bless dear God the citizens of this city. And Father, help us to understand, dear God, decisions have to be made. And those decisions are not always pleasing to everybody. But the bottom line, Father, is that you will please, and everything is done according to your will. We thank you for this meeting tonight, and we give you all the honor and the glory, because we ask these requests in your Son's name. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please indicate to my council colleagues your presence by hitting the yes button. And Madam Clerk, we have a quorum?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Our next item of business is the approval of minutes. And we have the minutes of a call meeting of February 26, 2018, the minutes of a call meeting of February 27, 2018, and the minutes of a regular meeting, February 27, 2018. In order for us to consider the approval of these minutes, is there a motion to approve? Move adoption?
Second.
We have a motion to approve and adopt the minutes as they are. It's been duly seconded. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And that carries. Our next are presentations. And the first presentation is a proclamation that I will read and give to Vice Mayor Elizabeth Simmons for Women in Public Office Day. If you'll join me up front. The month of March is Women's History Month, and we're going to celebrate it by celebrating women in public service. And we have two. We have Liz Simmons and Lisa Lucas Burke. Both are members of the city council and have dedicated this time in their life to public service. City of Portsmouth proclamation, whereas the month of March is Women's History Month and celebrates the significant contributions women of all races, all ethnic groups, and all backgrounds have made to the world. And whereas women play a critical role in the vitality and diversity of our communities and are essential to the insurance, Portsmouth's is well represented. And while, and whereas, while the 20th century was a pivotal time of growth for women entering politics, today, today, women remain underrepresented in this male-dominated field. Therefore, it is imperative that we provide opportunities to support women serving in public service. And whereas recognizing women in public office will bring awareness to the fundamental necessity of their work into our democracy, and will inspire other young people to serve their communities. Now, therefore, I, John Rowe, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, do hereby proclaim Monday, March 19, 2018, as Women in Public Office Day in Portsmouth. And I urge all members of our community to unite as we celebrate and support women in public office. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Mayor Rowe. To the public, know that this proclamation is being given all over the country. I have been a member for the last eight years of a national organization called the National Federation of Women Legislators, which takes all elected women below the congressional level. It's made up of governors, state senators, and house members, and locally-elected officials like me, and Lisa Lucas Burke, and school board members, and aldermen, as they're called, or alderwomen, in other states in the United States. And we meet annually. There are Republicans, Democrats, independents, libertarians. And when we go to these conferences, we talk about issues relative to supporting women in office and not Republican and Democratic-type issues. So, thank you, Mayor Rowe. And I can tell you that tonight, this is being done also in the State House in Kentucky and the State House in Georgia, the same proclamation. So, thank you for recognizing women in public office.
And I would be remiss. This, you think about women in public office, and you think elective office. But we have two great women who part of the leadership of the City of Portsmouth, the first ever woman city manager, Dr. Lydia Pettis Patton, and our city clerk, Deborah White. And I can tell you firsthand their passion for public service. But I can tell you really firsthand their passion for the City of Portsmouth and for the citizens. And they come to work every day with, what can I do today to make this a better community? And I thank, I thank you both. And I thank you and Lisa, yes. And thank you for this indulgence. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Now, if you'll stay up here, we're going to recognize our new boards, members of boards and commissions. And you'll do the penning.
I will do that.
A photo op?
Yes. That one. Mayor and Vice Mayor, we won't be doing pennings now.
Well, we only had three. And, yeah, they have conflicts, I'm sure. Madam Clerk, would you read the protocol for speakers, please?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, city council's rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum, and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
This brings us to the consideration of the city manager's report. The first item is item 18-110. And this is the consideration of the adoption of ordinance. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption, the title of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting aid to localities funding received during FY 2015 from the Virginia Department of Fire Programs in the amount of $15,748 and appropriating said funds in the grants fund for use by the Department of Fire Rescue and Emergency Services to support fire and emergency services in the city.
Thank you. So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Move adoption?
Sir, we have a motion that's been made and duly seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Yes, ma'am. The chair recognizes Vice Mayor Simmons.
Yes, sir. I would ask that the city manager explain to the public why we are appropriating money from the 2015 Grants Fund, please.
Dr. Patton.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council. This appropriation of the $15,748 during fiscal year 2015, city council accepted and appropriated the estimated allocation of $286,920 from VDM on September 9, 2014, to support suppression in the Department of Fire Rescue and Emergency Services. The actual allocation, once the grant was received and funded, was $302,668, a difference of the $15,748. In order to close out the grant, the city must complete and submit an annual report to the Department of Virginia Fire and Programs detailing the use of the funds, and the appropriation must match the allocation from the state. So this $15,748 will make it be the right allocation of the $302 that was actually received.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 18-111, which is the consideration of another ordinance. And would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance appropriating $43,529,573 by classification to the FY 2018 operating budget for the Portsmouth Public Schools to implement the fourth quarter of the annual budget.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And the motion carries. Which brings us to item 18-112, which is the consideration, the adoption of a certain resolution. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the resolution, please?
Yes, sir. A resolution abolishing the Americans with Disabilities Commission.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Sir, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Discussion, and the chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. It might be good for the public's edification to explain why we're doing this, that we all of a sudden don't have anything against folks with disabilities. So if perhaps the city manager can shed some light on this.
Dr. Patton.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council. This adoption of the resolution abolishing the American with Disabilities Commission under Administrative Policy Number 21, ADA complaints from the public about city activities are reviewed by the city's ADA coordinator, and decisions of the ADA coordinator are appealed to the city manager. And the ADA coordinator for the City of Portsmouth is our Human Resources Director, Mrs. Elizabeth Gooden.
And I think this commission probably was established even before the ADA came into existence. So it
Yes.
served its purpose, and now it's time to disband.
Yes. And across cities, the ADA coordinators are human resource directors.
Thank you. Thank you. And the chair recognizes Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, yes, Dr. Patton. Just want to make clear, the Americans with Disabilities Commission, as originally structured, were complaints to go through that commission instead of an internal process?
Yes.
Yes.
So by restructuring it this way, now it takes it out from an external group to now being handled in-house. Is that being done because of the necessary code or state requirement? Or is that just being done by way of our city choice?
Ms. Dr. Whitaker and Mayor, if you may, I'm going to ask Mr. Ashby to speak to that.
Thank you. Ms. Ashby.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council. As Dr. Patton has mentioned, the original commission, and as Dr. Whitaker raised, the original commission was to take in concerns and move those forward in terms of a place for redress. The law provides that we must require a place for redress, that being the ADA coordinator, in order to comply with ADA issues. Let me give you an example. Six months ago, a citizen raised an issue with regard to the city's websites. That discussion came through the Department of Libraries and was then forwarded through Ms. Gooden's office. We addressed that issue with the Office of Civil Rights to make sure it was compliant, we were compliant. Subsequent thereafter, and many of the public may know now that Mr. Daniel Jones and the IT Department added a significant number of upgrades with regard to several of the city websites garnering the city some national attention for our efforts in terms of upgrading. So there is a process. To the extent that there is a public concern, and Dr. Whitaker, I'm sure you're aware, at one point in time, these ADA public issues were not built into the system either building codes, city codes, and whatnot. Now that those issues are sort of built in, we do have a regional board that addresses disability issues. But the citywide issues are now focused through the ADA coordinator. So the citizens still have a venue to address it, be they citizens or employees. It's just internal as opposed to external.
Okay. And so the, so the state law requires that you set up an ADA coordinator?
Certainly.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. As a follow-up, what would be the process for a citizen to register a complaint?
Councilman Moody, any citizen that raises a complaint anywhere within the city, if someone were to come up and ask for a particular service, they could raise it anywhere in the city, that department, that employee is expected to route those issues through the ADA coordinator, Ms. Gooden, who is the Human Resource Director. So, much like the issue with the library website, it originally went to Mr. Elliott in the Library Department. It then was routed through Ms. Gooden, who addresses those both for citizens and for employees.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not ready for the question, all in favor of the motion to adopt, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 18-113, the adoption of another resolution. Would you read the caption of that resolution, please?
Yes, sir. A resolution opposing offshore oil and gas exploration, including seismic testing and drilling.
So that we can consider this matter, is there adoption to adopt, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move for adoption? Second.
We have a motion that's been made and duly seconded. Any discussion? If not ready for the question, all in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 18-114, which is the consideration and adoption of a motion. And Madam Clerk, would you read the motion, please?
Yes, sir. Adoption of a motion to accept a donation from Spikes K-9 to rebuild various K-9 training obstacles at the police facility located at 4402 Deep Creek Boulevard.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to this effect?
Sir, move.
Second.
We have a motion that's been made and duly seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to new business. Any reports on boards and commissions? Councilman Moody.
No, none tonight, Mayor. But we're always needing volunteers to serve on our boards and commissions. That process is easy. You can do it online. You can also contact the clerk's office. And those positions are extremely important. They help us bring council's vision to fruition. They're really an essential part of our city. I think all of us up here consider our boards and commission members as part of the team that's going to work very hard to make this a better city, to work, and to play, and to be proud of. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. The next item is item 18-116, items submitted by council members. And the chair recognizes Vice Mayor Simmons.
Thank you, sir. Probably the most important announcement of the year is that the city manager will present her budget proposal for the next fiscal year in this chamber on Monday, March 26, at 4:00 p.m. That's it. At that time, she will present her budget to the city council and the public. All of the public is invited to attend. If you cannot be here, it will be televised and replayed, of course, in all the usual places. That same week, on Tuesday, March 27, there will be no council meeting. We have canceled the meeting due to Holy Week. So do not come on Tuesday, March 27. We will not be here.
Thank you, ma'am. And the chair recognizes Dr. Whitaker.
Yes. This is just following up on a previous discussion we had in work session, particularly in closed session. Didn't want to ask the question because it would have been inappropriate in closed session. And that was pertaining to attorney fees. And I would like, if there's no objection from council, that when the city attorney submits the monthly attorney report, that it be included in that report, the amount that we are spending with external counsel on each one of those cases, so that when we meet, we can discuss those issues just like we did this, this evening. If there's no objection from council on that.
Okay. Everybody understand the question? Any problems with that? I think we do have a majority. Let's try it and see how it goes. Okay? City Attorney Solomon, Ashby?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
You know what the request is?
Yes, yes, certainly.
Okay, thank you.
Also, if council would check their email ahead, a clerk, Ms. White, to forward an email pertaining to the discussion with the CIP fund, the CIP budget, as well as the OPAP discussion with the school board. As I mentioned in our previous meeting, the liaisons met, Councilwoman Burke and I met last week, with the school board liaison and superintendent. And it was the understanding that as we move forward with the new school building, that the architectural and engineering funds be allocated in this upcoming budget, and that that would not be contingent on the school board transferring $3 million to the city's proposed OPAP account. And I just want to make clear, because I've mentioned that I thought that Mr. Rowe's involvement, and that was inappropriate. And I would like to just direct council's attention to the email on February 28, 2018, where the mayor indicates that if we can't, and he's speaking to transferring the money from the schools, if we can't, then Dr. Patton will have to move the start of this important project to out-years in the CIP. And I thought, once again, that that's inconsistent with the spirit and understanding of the meeting that we had. And I thought that that was an inappropriate interference by the mayor, because council had not directed for the city manager to do that. And we haven't even heard from citizens, nor have we heard a budget presentation. The last item that I'd like to submit is that on March the 15, the city will recognize the birthdate of Mrs. Augusta Baines. Ms. Baines is a retired public school teacher, and she will be turning 102 years old on March the 15. And last week, the students at Douglas Park sang "Happy Birthday" to her. And I just want the citizens to know about a beautiful and wonderful lady, Ms. Augusta Baines, 102 years old.
Thank you. And the chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. Want to remind everyone that on Saturday, March, April the 15, the Rotary will be having their Paint Your Heart Out function. And what they do, they paint the exteriors of several local, single-story homes in Portsmouth. And the work is free for eligible Portsmouth homeowners. And the team also cleans the yard, gets the yards looking terrific. And the eligibility requirements, the homeowners must be elderly, handicapped, or in financial need, which is subject to verification, verification. And all homes must be single-story dwellings. There is a nomination process, and those are due Thursday, March the 15. So it's not a lot of time. And Tony Goodwin is the contact. Tony can be reached at 757-320-3496.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Which brings us to items submitted by, no, report on pending items. I'm sorry. There are none. Now we come to non-agenda speakers, which is the last item on our agenda. And our first speaker is Pastor Kelvin Turner. And sir, you have five minutes.
Mr. Mayor, before I begin, I just would like to have a couple of us stand, if they will. These are just a few of several dozen pastors who get together and pray for the City of Portsmouth. And rather than them speaking individually, they selected one person to speak. And I don't know how they chose the one who's speaking. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for being here tonight.
To Mr. To Mayor John Rowe, Vice Mayor Elizabeth Simmons, councilmen and women, Moody Smith, Whitaker, Clark, and Lucas Moody Smith, Whitaker, Clark, and Lucas Burke, city official, Portsmouth residents, and all well-wishers of this great metropolis we affectionately call Portsmouth, greetings. I come in concert with collective voices of pastors and ministers, who were born in, raised in, reside in, pastor in, and or have a concentration of members who reside in this great city that we have come to love and appreciate. We come today, not as an official group, but with an official agenda to this body of council, and every invested partner of the city and community of Portsmouth, to both assure you and to serve notice that we love, care about, support, and wants, want what's best for Portsmouth. Portsmouth has been a great community, and it can be much greater. Portsmouth has a wonderful place for development, and we can make it even more wonderful place for growing families, caring citizens, potential professionals, eager entrepreneurs, and retreating retirees. To that end, we ask the question, what will it take for Portsmouth to be the best Portsmouth that Portsmouth can be? With the talented leaders, community resources, and global influence that we possess, it's difficult to conceive that we are not much further ahead. One does not have to look very far before they notice a few things that continuously hold us back. Partisan politics, racial disharmony, economic inequity, judicial disparity, and institutional injustice are all among the common cancers that continue to inflict disease, disability, and death upon our community. That is why we come today, because it's time to change all that. It's time to change partisan politics into political partnerships. It's time to deal with the demonic factors that keep us from being our brothers keeper. It's time to acknowledge, recognize, and concede that Portsmouth wants better, deserves better, and must receive better. We must acknowledge that there's a spirit of pessimism and prejudice that poison our progress, a spirit of negativity and neglect that neutralizes our nexus, and a spirit of dissension and division that denigrates our development. It is those spirits that has caused our movement to become malignant, our potential to become paralyzed, and our future fatalistic. It is the same kind of pessimism, negative negativity, and dissension that has caused an egregious act of injustice on behalf of one of your own council members and our pastor or brother, Dr. Mark Whitaker. We assert that it was political manipulation, judicial malfeasance, racial bias, and a personal vendetta from a political foe that your fellow councilmen and our pastor or brother, Dr. Mark Whitaker, stand accused. Charges were not brought against them by authorities who are the federal credit unions, the local police department, or members of the church's credit union. No, the charges brought against Dr. Mark Whitaker was by an overzealous sheriff who used his position of power, political influence, and judicial persuasiveness to jeopardize the security of a wife, two children, and aging parents. Because of a personal grudge and retaliatory vengeance, he has tarnished the sanctity of a congregation and faith community. The people of Portsmouth demand and deserve better than that. I'm not saying we must agree with everything a person says, nor the way they say it, but neither can we allow someone to malign one's character individually or communally because they disagree politically. We must fight against those individuals and systems that try to silence, intimidate, or infiltrate people, programs, policies, and processes that move us from our God-given, inalienable rights. As leaders, the people of Portsmouth expect much more from us. They don't expect us to whitewash our history and to pretend slavery, Jim Crowism, and separate but equal never existed. They don't expect us to be revisionist and act as if the Civil War was only about state rights and not about economic greed and exploitation. They don't expect us to be arrogant about our painful past by relabeling it, manifest destiny, Confederate history, or simply we will make America great again. They expect us to focus on a community that builds more schools than prisons, increase more jobs than shelters, expect us to cultivate stable families, encourage substantial economies, build sustainable communities, strengthen a struggling tax base, stretch a shrinking population, subdue staggering crime rates, and suppress overbearing taxes and tolls. They expect a council that's positive, progressive, and one that works for the people of Portsmouth. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Neal, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, and Portsmouth public. My name is Serge O'Neal. Before I start, first of all, I want to say thank you to Dr. Patton. She came and spoke to the twenty-eighteen Lefco class at our last class, and she gave us a very informative presentation of how things work on her end and some of her history, and it very, it enlightened me more than anything else. And now, if I don't remember anything, I remember the importance of responding to emails and stuff like that, so trust me, I had that going in my mind when I was at work today. So anyway, thank you so much. Also, thank you to you, Mayor Rowe, for your posting on your page, on your Facebook page, the Lefco, twenty-eighteen Lefco class, the community project that we completed last week. We were out at the YMCA on Effingham refurbishing the garden beds and cleaning up down near Swanson Home, so we thank you for posting those pictures. What I'm here for tonight is something of a concern to me. We, in this city, we, I would hope that the emphasis is on making sure that we are in good standing with all of our community partners and all of the community organizations that come to use our city's facilities and our parks. A situation occurred in which one community organization, which I sit on the board of, has been doing Easter egg hunt at a local park for the last three years. Two, in two years, in the first, in the beginning of the first two years, we had no issues. We seemed to have the city's support, and it was okay. This year, we had a lot of struggles with making sure that this program kicked off as intended. My thing is this, you know, I try to make sure that we are in the interest of fairness to all community organizations, we're not giving preference to one over the other, because I believe that is, that is important, that we have as many community partners as we can, and for all of them to be able to have the same precedence when it comes to usage of the city's facilities and parks, and not one group puts place over the other. We, you know, we have, we, I don't want it to seem like we have a group that is the highlight of the city when you have so many other community organizations that do great work, and some of them don't get as, as much highlight as the others. And some of these people get none at all, but yet still, they work tirelessly every day to make sure that the city has people that, that the citizens know, that care, not only at the government level, but in the, with just being neighbors, you know, and I just want to make sure that in the future, that if there could be some type of changing of the rule when it comes to organizations coming to apply to use the city's facilities, because guess what, a lot of the times, these organizations are doing most of the work, and now, they're doing all of it. They just need a place to hold their vignette. They raise funds from some, most of the time, some of the time, out of their own pockets. You know, I know the organization I sit on, a lot of the times, we don't get a lot of donations, and we simply as working individuals take out our own pocket to make sure that these kids that we service have some type of venue of enjoyment. We serve an underprivileged, an unfortunate community of kids that have parents that are incarcerated, and we all know the issues behind having one parent in the household, and how much of a strain that is on the remaining parent that is there. So we try to help those parents by being the avenue so that to bring their kids to have the support that they may need, so that they can have a better outlook on life, because I can tell you right now, as a person who had an incarcerated parent, I know full well of how hard it is on one person to have to raise not only one child, but my mother had three, and she worked, you know what, off to make sure that we had, even going without a lot of times. So I just want to make sure that as a city, that when we start looking at these organizations that are applying for city facilities usage, that we, I mean, sometimes, you know, it's hard for us to come up with the fees or whatever the case might be that are necessary, I mean, the insurance policy and stuff like that, whatever the case might be. So that may be something to consider in the future, but I just thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mark Gudalgi Yatrowski, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow interested parties. It's always tough coming to this podium after somebody of Dr. Turner's eloquence has been here, especially when I'm not going to speak as eloquently about a subject that doesn't lend itself to eloquence. I would like to, before I get into my main text, acknowledge that the room is a little warmer tonight with the presence of your former colleague and the always honorable Dr. Curtis Edmonds. Good to see him here. I would hope that he would speak as well, but that's not his intent, but his presence makes this a little friendlier environment. I want to talk about the budget process. As, as it occurred last year, there was a survey of citizens before any proposals were actually on the table, but unlike last year, there were only two in-person sessions that were offered, I'm sorry, there was only one in-person session offered. Last year, there were three, and although the attendance at the sessions last year was not overwhelming, there were some weather complications that I believe helped to reduce potential turnout. Still, it was three opportunities, one of them falling on a weekend, and I think that this year's effort may have suffered because of, of the lack of the additional in-person sessions. So according to the report that the management team provided last night, seven-hundred-and-eighteen citizens participated either in person or online, and with a registered voter population that exceeds sixty thousand, that does not provide a very good representation of citizen opinion. So I would say in formulating this year's budget, going by the results of the survey may not be meaningful. There are some other considerations that I think play into the puzzling results that were presented last night. One of the most puzzling is the prioritization of service offerings. When public safety comes in dead last, and education next to the last, and operational infrastructure in the middle, leisure services for youth and adults being the highest priority for funding, and community engagement, which is always a good thing, but still, for that to come in second highest, it seems to me, I have a possible explanation for this, it seems to me that people may have stopped reading after the line where it says, in order of importance on a rating scale of one to five, they didn't read where, and so they prioritized one, two, three, four, five as being the most important. That's, that's happened on some of the other dimensions of this study. So I would think that you might want to look at changing the way you phrase the questions that you're posing in terms of prioritization. To me, priority number one is the highest priority, and yet we have some things that are counterintuitive in this survey. The other thing that I, I want to comment on is there were no open-ended questions, and I think that there should always be that opportunity for citizens to fill in the blank. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, Mr. Gudalski Yatrowski. The, the issue that you're raising about the survey and the results, that was something that I addressed yesterday. I think, I think what the citizens should really demand of, of council and also of management is that if we're going to do surveys and get opinions from the citizens, it should be done in a scientific methodology, that we have universities all around us that can assist in putting together an instrument that would give us valid and reliable data that we can generalize to the public. I think it does a disservice when we put information out in a format such as that, that we can't reach any conclusions from. That survey, there was no control over who took the survey. It was not a random sample. You can't generalize about education if seventy percent of the participants do not even have children in public school. And also, the demographics of the persons who even were involved in the survey, sixty percent white, forty, forty percent, or twenty percent black, that doesn't reflect the makeup of the city. And if we're going to use this, and I've heard this survey referred to during last year's budget season, and I noticed you were lifting up information from it as well, I think it's, it's not proper that we put out information such as that in a non-scientific way, and then try to generalize it to the population, and then we make budget decisions off of it. And so I would encourage the citizens, we, we have a city manager with a PhD, we have universities, as I said, around us, we can put out the proper method to get the information so that as council persons, we can make sound and reasonable decisions. So I thank you for bringing that up, and I hope that our council will move in a direction of gathering information in a more scientific format. But thank you for raising that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. I concur with the need to have a scientific survey, but along with that, I think we need to lay out the parameters or with, what are we going to use it for? What's going to be the plan of action? Are we using it to see how we compare with other similar cities in benchmarks? Exactly what are we going to do with it? We, I guarantee you, we have a lot of surveys that have been done in my time on council that are looked at from a curiosity standpoint, and nothing is done with them. So perhaps staff, Mayor, if, if there's consensus, we could have staff get back with us on how we're going to go forward on, on making the survey not only scientific, but also useful, and lay out the parameters on what the useful will be.
To my colleagues on council, you have a request from Councilman Moody. Any negative? No? You want to speak? Okay, before we get the consensus, the Vice Mayor has asked for the floor, and the Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Simmons.
Thank you, sir. I don't think we're being fair to staff. Councilman Whitaker's not wrong, Councilman Moody's not wrong, but a few years ago, we asked the city manager, I think at a time before Dr. Patton was even here, to find a way to hear from citizens beyond the ten or fifteen or twenty that regularly come to council meetings, or send us emails, or, or make phone calls. And that was at a time when we were becoming better at using the Internet. And that was at a time when we were becoming better at using the Internet and the website, and could we go out to the citizens on a weekend? Could we go during the day? Could we go at night? Could we engage more people than the usual cast of characters that we always hear from? And I think that's what we tried to do. It wasn't intended to be scientific, it was just to try to reach out and touch other folks and different folks and hear from all sorts of different avenues, instead of just hearing from you every Tuesday night. Not that we don't love what you say, but there are 96,000 more people to hear from. It never occurred to me that the information from these surveys would be scientific. That's a totally different conversation than just trying to hear from different citizens, as long as you realize, like what we heard last night, that, you know, more than half of them live in Charchlin, and more than half don't have children in school, of school age, and more than half are white or whatever, then that gives you a parameter to understand where they're coming from. I think one of the hardest things to learn, sitting at this table, is that, and Councilman Clark and I talked about this just earlier today on the telephone, you sit here the first six months, and you hear from a lot of the same people, and all of a sudden, you begin to think, that's how everybody in this city feels, and that's not true. There are lots of people in the city we never hear from, and we don't know how they feel. And this was designed to be a way to reach out and touch those folks who don't feel like they can come to a meeting or reach out or stand up and speak. So, I think we need to decide if we even want to survey, not that it has to be scientific.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilman Smith, and, sir, I think you can sit down. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I believe it's a constant struggle to try to get input of any type from thousands of folks, but I also do believe that the effort should be worth its while, and I agree with the premise that we need to keep trying, and then we also need to make sure that what we get is useful. And I believe, and I hope, staff is getting that message, they've tried all kinds of ways to get folks to come out. We have public hearings also, that they can speak out on the budget, but there's all kinds of ways. I guess a survey is one of the ways, but I'm in agreement with my colleagues that say we do need to make it worth our while. We don't need to waste time gathering information from, you know, three or four, 500 folks and thinking that that's enough to guide us and direct us, and I'm in totally agreement with that, and we just, staff just needs to keep trying and coming up with other ways, alternative ways. If it's a scientific survey, then it's a scientific survey, but if they really want to, you know, get everybody's input, then we just need to keep trying, and who knows when if we might be successful, but they can't blame us from trying.
Thank you, sir. Chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. My suggestion was certainly not intended to be any criticism of staff. I look at the more scientific survey as just further down the road in using that information, as my colleagues have stated, in a more purposeful manner than just going through exercise and getting a small snapshot from a few people. I think that can serve to give us a false sense either of security or alarm us that we have a problem. It can go either way, because the sampling is so small, and it's done unscientifically. So, I'll stick with my recommendation that let's have staff come back with us on their ideas on how we can better the survey and use it as a useful tool to improve our city.
All right. You need this agreement? Dr. Patton, you understand what the ask is?
I understand what the ask is, Mayor, and I would ask that staff begin to look at a process as we work toward the 2020 budget. We're 12 days out from the 2019 budget, but we will work on a process.
Good. The Chair recognizes Councilman Clark.
Just to add to all this, you know, we're always looking for different ways to engage the citizens, and that is the intent of this, and that's why it was titled, you know, Budget Community Engagement Form. We're trying to engage the citizens, same way as we have the community meetings that we go out to the community, we've had several locations throughout the city. And, you know, I'd like to see the numbers double and triple that attend those meetings. You know, just like Vice Mayor Simmons said, you know, we see a lot of the same individuals at this meeting, and they're the same ones that come to the community meetings, you know, which I'm fine seeing all them, but I would like to get other members of the community neighborhoods come, and, you know, we're always open for suggestions as far as that goes as well. So, this is just another avenue that we were trying to engage input from citizens, as the same as our community meetings. So, you know, we're trying to think of new ways to make it easier for the citizens to come out, and that's why we've had some on the weekends, because we know, you know, people's work schedules are different, then some people can't come on the weekends because they have kids playing sports. So, we try to rotate the times and locations to make it available to as many different people as possible, and, you know, our hope is that each one of these meetings continues to grow with more and more people attending them, and that's, you know, to me, that's what this was done for, and that's why the meetings are. So, I like to hear from as many citizens as possible, you know, on any topic they'd like to discuss. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Thornton, and, sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening. I'm Michael Thornton, and I stay in the Brighton neighborhood of Portsmouth. Like, I went to the public work session earlier before this council meeting, and I found it very interesting and informative, like Greg Groot endorsed, he gave a lot of useful information about our economy and the Hampton Roads economy, and like, a few things stuck out to me that I think we should, like, take a closer look at. Like, I believe he said that 45% of Portsmouth workers live in other cities like Chesapeake or Virginia Beach, and we need to find out what would make those people want to move here, like, why don't they want to live here? That's a lot of people. Like, I hope 45% of our workers aren't saying that they'd rather pay tolls than live in Portsmouth, but I'm sure there's some coming from Suffolk and stuff, but like, I don't know, I thought that was a little disturbing, but, I mean, Portsmouth is getting better, so I wouldn't take that too negatively. And, let's see. But, yeah, he also pointed out that our, like, Portsmouth's economy is like highly dependent on government jobs, so we do need to do more to diversify the economy, and I saw that Portsmouth has a lower percentage of retail sales than the rest of Hampton Roads, so we do need to, like, develop more retail and other things to make some more tax money. And like, there's a whole bunch of empty lots that I would love to see stores on, and like, I got like, like, there's many companies I'd like to see come to Portsmouth, like Trader Joe's or Whole Foods or Target. There's like a whole bunch of good companies that ought to be building some stores around here. And, but I was thinking, why don't those workers who live in other cities want to live here? And like, a few ideas, I, I mean, a few reasons could be because we don't fund the public safety as much as we should, like police and firefighters, we could be hiring more of them, and then we need to do, we need to eliminate more of the blight, because there's like a lot of raggedy houses around here that somebody could fix them up, and like, I'd like to see these houses fixed up, and there's all these empty lots, like, someone could do a lot with those, and then, let's see, like, I do get annoyed with people always letting their dogs loose, like, a lot of folk have broken fences and don't realize it, so that's one thing that people need to look at, is make sure that they don't let their dogs loose, because, like, I heard that a police officer in Hampton had to shoot two pit bulls a few days ago because they attacked somebody's dog. And I was also, oh, yeah, I also thought that the presentation on offshore drilling, that was interesting, because we have all these, we have, well, yeah, since we have all the ships and stuff around here, that would really interfere with our main industry, which is like the Navy and the shipyard and all that, and since Donald Trump put those high tariffs on steel, I wonder if that's going to hurt our economy some. I think, oh, yeah, like, for oil drilling, we should speed the process up, like cubic zirconiums, there's got to be a faster way to turn sewage into oil. Okay, and thanks for the opportunity to speak. Have a good night.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jack Neely, and, sir, you have five minutes.
My name is Jack Neely. I reside at 15 Warden Place in Portsmouth, Virginia, in the Kardec area of Portsmouth. I am a life member of the NRA, and a few weeks ago, I went, and thank you for paying attention to me, Mayor Rowe, and members of City Council. A few weeks ago, I attended CPAC in Maryland. At that conference, there was a presentation by Wayne LaPierre of the NRA, and he informed me of something I had never heard before, and probably never, y'all have never heard. The NRA has offered that they will harden any school system in the entire United States for free, and I'd like to see our children be safe and do that. And I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our non-agenda speakers, and we have no other further business, and this meeting is adjourned.